We can sue the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim? I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Favor? Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
Second.
Favor? We have employee claims. Has everybody had a chance to look through those?
Yes.
The motion to approve the employee claims filed with the county auditor for six hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, approved claims filed with county auditor for two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Next, we need to approve the hiring of Cassidy Fetisville, seasonal naturalist intern at fifteen fifty per hour effective May fifth, twenty twenty five.
Yes, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, we have opening on the planning and zoning convention. Two applicants.
I would make a motion that we approve Darryl Bronco.
You come right by chance?
Love doing it.
Just, um, so the two applications that we received were Nick Denny from Winthrop and Darryl Bronco, sorry, from Brandon. Currently, Brandon area is not represented very well at this time, so I would fully support to have Darryl be on the commission. Generally, that's kind of how it works throughout counties, that we just try and cover different areas.
Right.
Be in full support of Darryl. Nothing against Nick, but we already have two from the Winthrop area. That's why I would just recommend Darryl. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you both of you for applying. It's good to see interest. Did we have a second on that?
Yeah.
It's your silence. You're not gonna say anything. I'll second.
It looks like we have. I understand the overrepresentation of the eastern half of the county, but it's like we have an investment individual and another individual who's.
But planning and zoning does nothing with investments.
Okay.
They have no, they make no money decisions whatsoever.
And the other individual has a history in construction?
Right.
Okay.
All in favor of putting Darryl Bronco to the planning and zoning board?
Nick?
Hey.
Hey. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports.
So.
Got some questions about this. What's, uh, we also got in there funds transfers of four point eight million dollars. Does this have any conversations?
I don't know what you're looking at, Keith.
Uh, the email that was sent out on Thursday, as well as the two hundred.
We haven't done any fund transfers. Um, we did some prior. We do have the transfers that need to be done. We need to finish transferring up to secondary roads. There's a transfer to conservation. And I can't remember the other one off the top of my head, but those have not been completed and will not be completed until the budget amendment is done. And then it'll be presented to the board and you guys will hold for a bit.
Yeah, I'm not all sure if this is the same topic or not, but you have, uh, it looks like, uh, wide items from two thousand and nineteen.
That's the project activity report that has nothing to do with the monthly reports.
Well, maybe we can get into this conversation later or something.
The project activity reports and report that you guys receive every two weeks.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion. Why don't you make an appointment with Chris and go in and ask for these questions so she can educate you?
I just said later. Don't look at either.
Yeah. Because you're taking up time.
Well.
And stuff that.
This is the point for the conversation and discussion, right?
No, your point of learning should be behind the scenes so you can learn, so you can come out here and act like you're educated. Sorry.
Yeah.
The way to view.
Well, it didn't work. Uh, I'll make the second.
Favor?
Aye.
Uh, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six departmental appropriations.
Make a motion.
And I need to read this resolution.
Yeah, so basically this resolution, um, I had presented one to the board on April fourteenth, and it was done by function. However, by Iowa code, it's required to have it done by department. So I had to break down the departmental budget request expenses only. This doesn't include revenues. And break it down by department, and this is the resolution that you're approving.
Where it has its desire to make appropriations for each of the different officers and departments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in accordance with section three thirty-one point four thirty-four, subsection six of the Code of Iowa, twenty nineteen. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of DeKalb County, Iowa, found appropriations by department are made for expenditures. Supervisors, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Auditor, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Treasurer, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Attorney, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, or seven hundred and thirteen, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Sheriff, five million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, two eighty-four. Clerk of court, five thousand, six hundred dollars. Recorder, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, oh fifty-four point seven five. Secondary roads, nine million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two seventy-five. Veterans affairs, a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven fourteen. Conservation, one million, two eighty-two, seven twenty-eight, or pardon me, seven seventy-eight. Public health, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Roadside management, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, four sixty-three. County farm, thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Human services, fifty-one thousand. Medical examiner, forty-nine thousand. Landfill, forty-six thousand. Public health, one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four seventy. Educational, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven ninety-six. Human resources, eighty-eight thousand, two seventy-one. Economic industrial development, thirty-six thousand, three thirty-four. Chemical dependency, twenty-five hundred dollars. General services, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine thirty-six. Information technology, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, two eleven sixty-two. GIS, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. Bus management, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Juvenile, fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Emergency management, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eight. Non-departmental, four million, two thirty-six, eight forty-four. Non-budgetary funds, emergency management, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine. Assessors office, five hundred and forty-two, four fifty. Uh, E nine one one, two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. And total appropriations of twenty-six million, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, or nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, six eighty-four. Past this day, the fifth day of twenty twenty-five.
Make the motion.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, approve the monthly report from the auditor's or from the recorder's office. Like they did another great month, uh, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three hours and thirty-five cents.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, items for discussion placed on file, the filing and manure management plans, R C cattle, Madison Township, section twenty-nine. Matt's place, Matt's place. Westburg Township, section thirty-five. Madison site, Madison Township, section twenty-seven. Daniel Toma site two, Westburg Township. Section thirty-three. Hazelton site, Buffalo Township, section nineteen.
I mean, I'd make the motion to place those on file.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Schedule.
I can discuss the audit, the request for the RFP that's sent out, for I sent out. Um, our contract with our outside auditors is done as soon as they finalize the audit, which will be in a couple of weeks. So I went ahead and I sent out the RFPs. And I sent it to Gardner and company that we currently have. State auditor, Ivan Bailey in Dubuque. And there was another one in Atumla. Uh, last time we did this, the, we received two back, and it was from Gardner and the state auditor. There was a significant price difference. Deadline for those is May sixteenth, and then I will put them on the agenda, and the board can review them. There's a process to review. And then you will appoint, uh, our next, our outside audit firm. And then I will let them know.
What's the terms, gentlemen?
Oh, just a heads up that that's coming. Guess I shouldn't come on.
That's good. Uh, let's hop down to document scanning. What was that topic about?
Mr. Wieland requested that.
I did request to put it on the budget, early agenda, I mean.
When you sat in my office Friday and said we'd like to.
I would like to have it scanned, but we're not ready to put any information together.
I asked if you would like it for discussion. And you said yes, so that is why it's on the agenda.
Well, that's fine.
I mean, no decision has to be made.
I agree.
You can just put it up for discussion.
Yeah, so the question was, uh, I was looking for the original, uh, resolutions and ordinances stacked in the beginning of time. And, uh, a lot of these are still on paper format. Sounds like people have kind of requested, uh, bids in the past for, for, uh, to scan all of this stuff. And so I wanted to get a measurement of, of, uh, the records and figure out how many of them were in good quantity to conduct a conversation. Actually ended up breaking ones, so that was very embarrassing, but, uh, yeah, so that came up as well. But yeah, so what was the discussion in the past about, uh, scanning these applicants? And there must have been some reasons, actually.
We did. We had a company come in and actually did the recorder's office. And they gave us a bid for each of the departments on what it cost.
Yep. I had, it was mainly, um, they came in because we had ARP, it was initially when we got the ARP of funding. And, um, the recorder's office got two, three bids. My office got three bids, which included the board minutes, uh, election stuff, and some documents from roads. There's all kinds of them down in the vault. At that time, um, I decided not to move forward on the auditor end because I felt the election equipment was a higher priority. And Michelle went ahead with hers with COTTS systems. So, but yes, as of right now, and since I'm gonna say one hundred and eighty-five years, all board minutes are on paper. And they are put in an official book, same thing like with my election stuff. And right now, I think it's two thousand and fourteen is available out on the website. I think that's as late as we go back.
That's right, yeah. So when we had, when we were talking about ARP funds, that was a possibility for this, but otherwise it doesn't sound like it progressed further. We didn't want to apply it to our general budget at that point, or?
Correct. The, the cost was pretty.
Right.
Is that, it sounds like we got a bid for this of twenty-eight thousand, roundabout?
That was back in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, like, it was still only good.
I highly doubt it.
If I'm not mistaken, when we did the recorder's office, it took approximately a month for them to get it scanned, yeah. We had them set up superior downstairs and for insurance. It took about a month to get that done, and they brought in a team and everything. Yeah, the option sometimes of them taking materials with them and going to their office to do it, or do it on site. We thought with the, uh, fragile nature of live records in the recorder's office.
It would test the lab.
Yeah. It would be best to do it on site.
Yeah.
And they did a good job. So, you know.
Was that something we should look at next year?
You want to add that to the budget? As you want to decrease employees through attrition?
I think that putting these things on in electronic form would actually increase our efficiency as well. So it should reduce our personnel hours.
Why? I mean, I guess, number one, who goes back and looks at resolutions from a hundred and fifty years ago?
Sure.
All we're doing is wasting money for something that nobody's gonna review. So how do you think that that would be, um, making it more efficient?
Just correcting the wrong, but all of our information going back to what, twenty fourteen, is now available electronically.
Yeah, it's on the website now. Um, I, I'm sure I could always go back and find prior minutes and put them out there.
I don't really see the necessity of that myself, but since we're more than ten years past that.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, so, and if somebody reaches out and would like minutes, I can send them to them. That's not a problem.
Well.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? Now, we need to open the public hearing. Need a motion to open a public meeting for Miller's building on public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Put it down, yeah, public hearing.
So since, um, the request had come to the three of you.
Yes, mine up.
Uh, my job that.
That door has a bit of a spring to it.
The air.
The ankles.
He just said.
Are you on it, sorry?
Yeah.
Everybody like.
So if you're like, yes.
Um, okay, so since the request came to the three of you, um, and to Chris to be placed on the agenda, um, the decision was made to request to withdraw the application, um, from the board of supervisors, um, mainly for the reason that the P and Z voted six and zero to deny this request. So we're just here. Um, I guess if you guys have any questions, we've got Nick Miller and TJ Murphy here that can answer any questions, so if you can't.
Yes, I'll just start with initially, we, so since we were denied, we just right away went ahead to try to, to bring it to this step. And in the meantime, working with Amber, um, turn TJ and TJ's looking to buy the land, so we came up with an alternative plan, which TJ kind of likes better.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go with that, submit that for, uh, this Wednesday. For planning and zoning to try to get that passed, but since we're on the agenda, we wanted to just, I guess, come meet.
Yeah.
Be here and.
Ask what the alternative plan is.
Um, it's actually just on the other end of the field.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's about a thirteen acre field and just we moved up. It's a lower CSR.
Yeah.
So just a, yeah, just, uh, two acres to reason for building a house.
There's a previous farmstead on that portion of it.
Yep.
At that, at that, at that point in time, so it just, um, after having the discussion, what we said that, um, would probably be a better off alternative location, so.
Yeah, it's kind of on a narrower end of the field where it's gonna go from the road to the creek line and, yeah.
Do you have house plans already done?
Uh, no, no, that's, that's in the process. We wanted to get this, this step done first, and then, uh, and then, and then after that, uh, we'll get that rolling on, on that track, but, um, yeah, just.
It'll be original opposite because the high CSR, basically.
Yeah, we're looking at six sixty, whatever, come out to average, and
Yeah.
this now is under, I think it was under fifty-five, but it's around fifty, I think.
Yeah. So this is the original requested area, um, fifty percent at sixty-nine CSR, thirty percent at thirty-seven CSR, and twenty percent at fifty CSR. So this original location was something that, um, Chad had worked with them previously on, um, so we went ahead and submitted it through. However, the concern with the higher CSR being taken out of production was a major concern. Um, so this location's more on the south side of this parcel. Um, if you look closer towards the north, towards the top of the screen, you can see some trees. Um, and that's about where we're gonna shift that rezoning location to go.
Those gone before the board?
Yeah, yeah.
This week?
Yeah, yeah, they still have to review it and get their votes in, and then we'll, um, resubmit to the three of you again for approval.
Before everything works out.
Yeah, I mean, so, I'm sorry, I hope we weren't, we were kind of a step ahead, but it's like we're on the agendas and we can't be taken off. It sounded like so. Rather than just looking like a no-show, we wanted to at least say hello, you know, and definitely let you know what's coming, going down.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll get on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Come collect with everything.
Yeah, we'll come see you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'd entertain a motion to, uh, suppose, uh, give a change of opinion.
Yeah, we were at the ground. Sure.
Motion. But we approve what.
Deny it due to their withdrawal. I think that's how I got thrown in.
I'll entertain a motion to deny it based on their.
Second.
Favor?
Yeah, that's why I had to do the draw from the request. Your vote.
All right, Linda. Any master discussion, Mike, gonna go ahead, open up the public comments first. Fine?
I got questions. What is your knowledge on the eminent domain issue that's going on with the state department? And with that, I want to just make some statements that, you know, CO2 pipeline, there's a lot of risk to people's lives. You know, and, and how many miles, and I haven't gotten into that yet, how many miles would a shut-off be away?
You probably need to ask some people, the summit, I, they actually have all the safety specs and everything, and they have the, the shut-offs, and it's all pretty automatic. Like if there's a, they can actually, I was pretty impressed with their, with their talk, actually. So if there's even a tract at the brackes over the top of that pipeline, they can tell you just from the ground vibration and all the technology that they have.
Another, another quick question is, if there is a leak, do we have any of our EMS, uh?
They know it right away.
They know it right away, but if it leaks, CO2 can be very deadly.
They know.
Then your equipment doesn't work, and, and the first responders would get there, and, and what is, how much, how much time do they have if they don't have the equipment to, to protect themselves?
Right, you know, the shut-off's actually shut the pipeline down, so, you know, there's, there's only so much that can leak out, and CO2 is something that we have in our air naturally anyway. As long as you're not standing right on top of it, I think you're okay. Um, I mean, not saying that I'm for or against them, I'm just saying, just someone went over their technology, and it was pretty, I was pretty impressed with the technology that they have. They went over that at the, um, thing in Hazelton.
But anyways, you know, I have a concern is that, that, you know, being on EMS and part of it myself, you get a lot of people that come to the scene of the, the occurrence, the accident, and, and they're not prepared.
Right.
How long do they have before that knocks them out? You know, equipment, you know, too much CO2, your equipment doesn't work, your, your, your vehicles don't work, and those types of things. What is, you know, what is the length of somebody's life? And just think of the topography of Fairbank. Fairbanks kind of set down low with the topography.
Right.
CO2 doesn't just go away quickly. So what is the risk of a thousand people living in Fairbank if, if they have a leak there? You know, th- those are things that, um, can we believe everything that someone's saying? As far as the risk, risk of life, I mean, this is a severe risk. And do we understand that? So anyway, getting back, is our legislature gonna let eminent domain occur, and, and we don't have any rights of keeping anything out here?
So currently, there's a, uh, there's a, at least a dozen, uh, state senators that are holding up the budget because this bill was previously dead, and so they're, they're saying we had enough votes to bring this to a, uh, uh, a, a vote, and so they're, they're currently holding up the budget as far as being able to, to negotiate this, this bill specifically, so what, what that entails, I don't know.
With the governor's thing, I mean, I.
Yeah, this is the next question.
I think from what I've heard, I'm, I'm worried that she would.
The only thing you have to do is change the definition. There's one definition under that code. All they have to do is take, um, I think it's hazardous, all of that definition, and it is.
Don, that's a good job. Uh, it's nine twenty-five, we need to hearing, we need a motion to open public, or zoning hearing, overall, public hearing.
Make the motion.
Set it.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now, yeah. Public hearing. Eric.
Morning.
Morning.
Welcome.
Um, okay, so this is a class of reporting in section twenty-seven of Kono Township. Um, the applicant is booked to sell the entire team acre parcel that is already established. Um, what is outlined in purple there is the south seven acres plus or minus there. Um, for this request, there were four neighbors that were notified of the request. So, um, CSR, there's seventy percent eighty-six CSR, twenty percent sixty-seven CSR, and ten percent seventy-six CSR. Um, this is not located in the flood zone. And then it recommended, um, or approved today, um, during the construction of the new dwelling, the septic and well would need to be, um, constructed. And also, if approved, um, there would be a minor plaque completed as of, um, just to parcel off the south portion there. Um, there is an average traffic daily count of fifty vehicles per day. And I recommended the request with the recommendation that the construction only take place in the sixty-seven CSR, so mainly that south portion of that outlined area there. Um, and then per the minutes, as I'm sure you guys have read through, um, this request was denied, um, by the P and Z on a six and O vote. And the applicant, John, is here if you have any questions for him.
So, since, since, you know, the board meeting, the last meeting, the north seven acre parcel has been sold. Um, we actually closed on that on Friday. Um, and basically what I'm trying to do is settle up my parents' estate. Essentially, my father passed away in October. My mother's on hospice.
Sorry.
And, um, so the south seven acres by rezoning it to basically in A two, so someone could build a residence on it, that would at least entice someone to buy it, the seven acres as a whole, the the surrounding farmers are not interested in whether it be they currently can't afford, or they don't want to um, create hardship with each other. I'm not sure what that is, but, you know, there's no interest there. So I guess that's why I'm proposing to do this. I do have potential, potential offer if it could be rezoned. And if that would fall through, it, it might be a case where I just do something there myself.
So it was, you may have us deny.
Correct.
And it would be, as Amber said, it would be only on the, the southern, the east, you know, like taking out the two acres, which is the minimum.
Right, that is correct.
Um, and then the balance, the remaining five acres would be left to both farm ground.
And those two acres are the sixty-seven CSR?
Yes. Yeah, the green portion is the seventy-six CSR running through there. We would take, um, we would square that off, um, and probably just take very minimal eighty-six and seventy-six out.
Just to stay in guidelines of your setbacks, of the setbacks that we need from property lines and so on.
So we're looking at wanting the board to approve a reversal of the, so.
Not so much a reversal, I guess it's it's still entirely up to you guys um whether to approve it or deny it. Whether P and Z approves or denies, the request will come to you guys, since it's a rezoning request.
Of the planning zoning back there, any comments or Wendy?
Uh, this one was uh based on CSR and the um. The seven acres, we take the two acres out of there. You are taking out some higher CSR, which leaves five acres, five acre field. Right, the cultural process is. Possible, which is small, but. And and we 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 discussed the situation as well.
Mr. Irvin, do you farm the adjacent ground to that?
I do not, I do not. I actually live in Manchester.
Oh, okay.
The adjacent ground connected to it is uh George and Laura Arnold. Which would be the connecting ground and the ground to the south would be Miller's. The Arnolds are not in a position to, with the commodity prices and so on, they're not in a position to to buy the ground. And uh the people that has purchased the building site, I'll call it. They wouldn't, weren't able to basically purchase the full seventeen or fourteen acres.
Hate to approve something since the people that were right in front of you had theirs denied and had to go back and.
Understand, understand that. But my options are pretty limited.
These recommendations. Now I'll take the motion to uh close public hearing. Okay, now we need to uh take action on. Request run.
Based on our um findings on our recommendations. I would make the motion to deny the request.
But buy, die for lack of second or?
It could. Guess what are our options?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning request.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Vogel, Nay. Wieland? Kurtz?
Situation, Eric, I'm gonna get the sound decision. There you go. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Back to our end for discussion, EMS constitution. That we uh. He expressed some concerns in the newspaper regarding our EMS proposal. Sam?
I guess I'm looking for an update and heard a proposal yet, so.
Delivery printing off what you put in. Newspaper. She was putting the paper on April twenty-eighth, which I guess is in conflict of what. We voted on, approved on, and made a statement to and published in the newspaper. We can ask before that. And I'd like to have some discussions.
Sure, what would you like to discuss?
Is this in your physical capacity and the supervisor that you're doing this?
I did sign it as my name, my title.
And you did, we had unanimous vote on approval of our letter. From the board supervisor. So I guess explain to me what more discussion you wanna have on this.
I'd like to see a bucket.
We're gonna have it to you hopefully in chair.
Sounds good, thank you. Do we have a a listing of what ambulance services we've contacted and who we talked to?
Time out. Have you read the chapter for the levy? Have you read that in Iowa code? It was supposed to be recounting ran in.
Yes.
Iowa code specifically says that, so why are we contacting outside firm? Why would we go against it unless you wanna pay for this directly out of county funds, in which case tax rate are already gonna pay for it above and beyond what they're paying for?
I think as I described in the letter, which now you.
I read it in the newspaper. And please don't try to speak for me. Any, any people asking, do not try to speak for me.
I didn't.
It could be construed as a misunderstanding that uh. You speaking as supervisor is speaking for the board. Which I would encourage you to probably in the future leave that off of there.
So.
It's not your citizen. Citizen key.
Supervisor, but just supervisor.
I would just, no, I would just say your name and address.
Okay, well, I appreciate.
And I don't know, we'll walk and talk to Sean Harden about it and see what his suggestion is.
Okay.
I just don't think without us voting on something, we shouldn't be making those kind of statements. The other thing that I disagree with on contacting a third party ambulance service. Is we agreed, and I'll reread this letter to the public. Buchanan County Board of Supervisors has approved the recommendation of the EMS Advisory Council. To pursue the formation of the Buchanan County EMS Ambulance Service. Our intent is not to renew the contract with AMR or current provider. This would be a county-owned and operated service to the areas of county currently served by AMR. And based out of Buchanan County Health Center. Jessup and Fairbank would retain their current ambulance services and be subsidized by the county levy. In addition, local communities with first responder services will also be subsidized with funding to. Equipment and services are planning to accept all insurance providers. Relate filing cities at first responder services, Brandon, Wasqueaton, Rowland, Winthrop. Lamont, Hazelton, Aurora, and Stanley, Independents is awaiting their formal approval. The intent is to add the levy to the November twenty-twenty-five ballot for voter approval. Advisory Council is currently in the process of developing their budget and finalizing their proposal. For a levy rate up to seventy-five cents per thousand taxable valuation. Public informational meetings will be held throughout county this summer to get the message out, more details to file.
When is the next meeting?
Mr. Perkoff, can you explain the history of the ambulance and AMR and stuff? I mean, you've been, you went on for a long period of time.
Yeah, so.
Do you mind if I ask my question first?
Oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
When is the next meeting?
The fourteenth.
Oh, where is that?
Seven PM.
Thank you.
So I guess right now, reason we're in this position is uh. We used to have area ambulants out of Cedar Rapids cover us. And was it twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, when they said, you know what, they was able to do it at that time for. They's generating enough funds where they didn't need to be supplemented. Due to increased cost in equipment, uh personnel, everything else, they requested that there be supplement. Whatever happened at that time to the supervisors or whatever in the city of Independence, uh they decided to look around, see what their options were. Um, I think in the meantime, area pulled out, AMR came in, and that was our two options, um was them two. Uh, so at that point, they went from uh basically looking like a free service to now we have a supplement service. Uh, ambulance costs went from one hundred fifty to four hundred for an ambulance. Uh, we know employee costs continue to goes up, cost benefits goes up. So that's what area was saying, what we know from uh what they wanted to where uh AMR came in, I don't think there's too much difference. Per year, but it's coming up to about five hundred thousand a year. So that's where we're at right now. We went, and I think ARPA funds were used to fund it. So no one actually took anything out of their budget at the time. Now, all of a sudden, ARPA funds are gonna end, what, twenty-twenty-six? We need to figure out how to fund it. If it's, if it's having our own ambulance service or if it's using a outside service. Uh, you know, we're here to make follow through with what the supervisors feel most important for our citizens. We wanna make sure we got the best service for our citizens in the county. Uh, we're all volunteers, basically. Doing it, so you know, there's nothing in it for us as far as we wanna make sure we got the best service for our citizens. But that's how we got where we're at. I mean, it's it's basically went from zero cost to five hundred thousand annually. It was in nobody's budget to do it before. We had ARPA funds, now we gotta figure out how to come up with funds.
And to clarify that, the hospital was paying that out of their funds. And Independence was paying a third of it out of their general fund. Uh, they were not using our funds. The county was the only one. Because it got sprung on us where we had no time to figure out any other means of paying.
This was pre you and me.
Pre us.
Yeah. It was, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, was it like a sixty day notice that area gave us?
Yeah, it's pretty quick, they.
And it was like in June.
Yeah, they have to give a ninety day notice. I think they stayed an extra thirty days just so we didn't not have an ambulance.
And so there was absolutely no funding in the budget to um. The county, you paid for their portion of this service. And so that's when, at that time, the board decided to use the ARPA funds.
The AMR contract, is that, what's the notice on that? Is that a hundred eighty days or? Do you happen to know?
To sever the contract? I guess I don't know that.
It's actually up for renewal in twenty-twenty-six.
Uh, one of the one of the concerns, obviously, and the reason I brought it up, is that a lot of people are concerned that that uh they hadn't heard notification of. What ambulant services we reached out to. So that's, that's why I'm prevent, prevent uh presenting that information to you to say. Okay, if you want a recipe towards a success, let these folks know what processes you went through and who you identified and those kinds of things. It's not meant to be derogatory. I'm just trying to help you understand that if you want those peoples, the uh their votes as well. That may be something to consider, I think.
I was just gonna say, we had no intention of reaching out to a third party again because the overwhelming. Opinion of our county residents is that they do not want a third party service. Independence has said that they will not participate in a new ambulance service coming in other than the county levy. And so there's no way that the county and or the hospital alone can do this. Without going to the voters and I question the need of levy assistance.
And then John, you guys were having a meeting with the mayors, is that correct, last ball?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's when the decision was for all the mayors and supervisors decided this is the route they wanted to go.
Correct, I listened to that whole thing, it was.
I mean, we're here to support that decision. And I guess for us to go out and start looking for bids, it isn't what supervisors should have asked us to do at this point.
I gotta get jot down some bullet points here on this and uh. Our uh current contracted EMS ambulance services are not fi- uh financially sustainable. Nearly five hundred thousand dollars per year will not be feasible due to the city of Independence no longer extending their agreement. County financing has been possible due to the use of ARPA funds, but they were not in twenty-twenty-six. It would be unworkable to pull funds from the county general fund applied to the ambulance service. The county is served by several volunteer, every several area agencies, their primary providers are Jessup all volunteer. Fairbank all volunteer, and AMR based in Independence. AMR is a contracted service provider. AMR took over for area ambulance in twenty-twenty-one as the area ambulance declined to renew their contract. Paying a third party for ambulance services does not seem to be in the best interest of our taxpayers. The county will have much better control and oversight versus a contracted provider. Fees for services will be remitted back to the county versus a contracted provider.
To be put in that, back in that, that same fund. So we can decrease, slowly decrease the amount.
Correct.
Over time.
Whereas right now, any fees that area or. AMR receives for ambulance services that they provide to a patient goes directly to them. This way, when those fees are applied, they would come back to the county EMS Association to help sustain that. Organization. Currently, AMR does not accept Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is the largest provider in the state of Iowa. We would have the county sign on this, it'd be preferred preferred provider at a much lower cost to residents and accept all insurance providers. AMR did not want to contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield to be a preferred provider, which would. Automatically negotiate lower rates, and that's why they refused to do that. Therefore, we don't get the insurance coverage for Walmart, which covers approximately eighty percent of the state. Uh, the EMS levy would fund the independent-based ambulance service in addition to funding Jessup and Fairbank. Plus the many first responder agencies throughout the county. This would provide funding for training, supplies, and much needed equipment. The first responders are most likely to be the first on the scene and provide the immediate care needed prior to an ambulance arrival. And lastly, AMR has rarely ever fulfilled their agreement. Under contract, they have two staff ambulances, which is in our. So that's my summary of comments.
Nice one.
Staff ambulance issue was also an issue with area too. It just wasn't as big an issue. There were times where they would contact Jessup and say, hey, just so you know, we don't have second crew today, you might get called. And at that time, Jessup was hurting, Jessup would do the same to area and say, hey, we don't have a crew today either, you might be coming to Jessup. Uh, so that issue has been around for area and AMR, and then with a uh county-owned service. We have the ability to control staffing and make that not an issue with that four.
And I think John would probably uh. Speech to this also, but back when area was here, we had a lot more local. People on the ambulance service, where right now, we've got a lot that are completely out of the area that work for AMR.
Right.
So we don't have that quick availability of an on-call person or somebody that jumps in to help out.
Right, and and the other big thing that's changed, and you know, we hate to keep bringing up things that happened during COVID, but. Um, right now, uh before COVID, we brought probably ninety plus percent of our patients to Buchanan County Health Center. Now, because we're not sure if we can get them transferred out or they need a higher level of care. We probably take fifty percent of our nine-one-one calls there, so we're automatically out on fifty percent of the calls, two and a half to three dollars. We gotta go to Cedar Rapids, Waterloo, so that makes that second crew that much more important, which we didn't necessarily have the problem, as big a problem with uh. Pre twenty-twenty than we do now.
So probably nine and fifty-one percent, pardon about?
Pardon?
What were the two percentages?
Well, so fifty percent now is, we go out on a nine-one-one call, about fifty percent of them calls, we have to go out of county.
And then what was the previous number? That's what I missed.
The before that, probably ninety-five percent came to Buchanan County Health Center. Before COVID, we brought almost everything here, and then if we needed a higher level of care, we could transfer them out at that point. Now we have to make the decision if if there's any fans at all that they're gonna need higher level of care, we all might be have to take them somewhere else because of bed space.
And sometimes, sometimes it's very hard way too. And sometimes sometimes it's very hard way to, Charles, do you?
Well, and and that's that's what we're running to now. So with our transfers, you almost always before that, you could get into Walmart, Cedar Rapids, or off city. We've gone to Des Moines, we've gone to Mayo, we've gone to Omaha. Um you know, the transfers are getting further away. So you take some of them transfers now, so we got a crew out. If it's our A L S crew, they could be out of the out of the territory for eight hours. You know, eight to ten hours per call to Mayo.
So much of that is based on availability of options.
Yeah. So I mean, every, there's been a lot of things changed, not only increasing cost, but also when you start looking at all that uh off limits too. Um we just got a lot more time out of the county right now with that first. And that's what makes it important to have a second crew. So.
I will uh. Say third party ambulance services are a rarity anymore because. It is not a real profitable business unless uh you are supplemented significantly by whoever contracts it. So uh I don't know, other than area and A M R, anybody within the region that does it.
The the only private services in the area, other than A M R area. Focus on inter facility transports only. They don't do nine one one calls because they get a contract with the University of Iowa. To do transfers because that's that's where the money is. They don't care about nine one one. So so yeah, area and A M R kind of the rarity for our area.
And then then a challenge you can, you know, you look at like LeMans. The other day they had a situation again, you know, Strawberry Point is supposed to be their first provider. And Strawberry has a hard time getting a crew. So then they're just sitting there, their first responders are sitting there for fifteen, twenty minutes sometimes, not knowing. Which ambulance service is coming because if they don't respond, then they gotta call Manchester. It's the city of LeMans or A M R. So you know, we just need to make sure we've got a stable service here in the county for all them situations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you, I guess, give any comments?
Welcome your guys.
Um I I you know, appreciate the fact that I think that the community as a whole um needs to have information. I appreciate that. However, I think there's a huge caveat here that if that type of information goes out. Just as a citizen, this is how I feel is that that should be approved by the whole board before it hits the paper. That that can't be a one shot deal, probably somebody that's asking for help.
Yeah. The only thing is confuse the situation. Especially as of when we voted one way and then something comes out in the newspaper at that point. I don't want people to be confused. They were confused last time.
Well, I heard that. It's not good. And I had over a dozen phone calls myself, knowing my involvement in this. Want to know what the heck was going on. And we don't need to muddy the situation. So we need to be factual and fact based on what we're saying.
And about the same amount of calls, same, we didn't realize that there wasn't a budget.
Say that again.
About same amount of calls, same was they didn't realize that there wasn't a budget for the last thirty.
There was a budget.
There was a budget.
Can I see that as a little budget?
It was.
Yeah.
It wasn't the itemized you probably would like.
Probably.
And.
There wasn't a bit, um we could have lacked the nuts and bolts of how we're gonna put it together, but they have a. Minus how were the funds were gonna go and to make sure the outside, like the rallies and you know, provide some training for. Some of the people in the area.
I'm I'm sure we'll get it nailed down this year.
Yeah, there was a those budget last year. One of the things we identified was it wasn't as detailed. Those people wanted this year, I expect it will be a much more detailed budget.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Yeah, are are you at liberty to discuss any of the findings that you're finding on your surveys that you've been sending out with the uh different providers?
Um yeah, I mean, it's it's so that we sent out a survey that basically asked the services. What are your, what are your top three concerns? Um how many staff do you have? Are they full time, part time volunteer? What age range are they? How many years of service do they? What? How many calls a year does your service run? Do you do transfers or not?
This is great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then what into equipment that they have and.
Yes, and we found so I I'm working on getting it all put together for our next meeting. But basically, we have a lot of people who have a lot of years of service and are on the older end. That like, for example, Kloski has seven volunteers. Four of them have been on twenty plus years, three of them have been on twenty plus years, and four of them are over the age of fifty. Like, that's that's a significant, you know, uh finding for a first responder service if have your staff over fifty years old. Um and a lot of the concerns were repeated as far as equipment costs, maintenance costs and vehicle costs. Those were three very common ones throughout almost all the agencies. Um right now, it looks like uh a lot of the agencies are essentially. Depending on donations and grants to get what they need, um which obviously isn't stable. And that is just to meet their minimums. Uh that's not to like, we talked about getting A Ds, jump bags, that sort of stuff. So that's kind of where what I've seen so far, but I haven't finished putting everything together yet for our next meeting.
Have you considered uh uh sending out surveys, asking, you know, what providers are in the area and what? I I'm sure there's some sort of history about whether what uh nine one one calls were medically necessary and all of those different uh. Itemization of calls.
Like like call types, like was it like a fall or a cardiac?
Yeah, whether or not they could bill it to the insurance or you know, what what those line items are covered.
So for first responders, they typically aren't gonna bill. They're they're the way. I can't speak for all first responders, they work with different ambulances, but the ambulance is gonna build for the transport and the loaded miles. The first responders, if they use supplies, typically will just get.
Sorry, I'm switching over to ambulance.
For ambulances, um. They, you can run data depend software. Um to see like how many call types, how many cardiac call types they ran, how many falls they went on um as far as billing.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that billing code. Exactly. We have some subject matter experts in the community that'd be able to help us there.
Most so I'm not sure how, I think A M R has their own billing service entirely, right?
Yes.
Um Jessup and Fairbank both use third party billing. Um I'm not sure Fairbank uses P C C, but Jessup uses P C C. Um I'm not sure, I know they can run reports on that. I don't know how it would look, how how that report is laid out.
Or if we'd even be able to have access to it. I mean, there's those conversations too.
Yeah, yeah, I assume Jessup or Fairbank or A M R would have to get it themselves and then be willing to share that with, yeah.
You you do run into some depth of things when you start questioning what all these things are. So it's. It's kind of sketchy of what you wanna.
Yeah, the last information uh talking to some private that I have, it's about twenty percent that you don't get to bill for.
That's.
Of the nine one one.
Thank you, yeah.
Don't know for sure exactly, you know, in Buchanan County, but I do know some privates, that's what they're saying, about twenty percent is what you cannot bill. So that'd be lift system and stuff like that typically you're doing.
And you're not, if you bill for a thousand dollars, you're highly unlikely gonna get all thousand dollars back, just.
Picture of the beast.
What's that?
Picture of the beast, yeah. Yeah, thanks for this information.
You have a question, Jim, or Keith?
I'll moment.
Uh I'll return to public comment if there were any more come over comments. I guess I cut Dawn off under.
I could talk, I could talk carbon CO two all day long, because there's so many other uses for it.
Yeah, and I know that uh part of their summits program was they were gonna conduct. Uh specialized training with all the EMS and responders and emergency management people. It's.
Think this is probably the one time I'd talk about what the state of California is doing, but they've actually put a moratorium on carbon pipelines until it comes out. Comes out with rulemaking on those safety topics that you were talking about. So um. But the one time I would agree with California, seems like uh Tim's that has since withdrawn those those rulemaking proposals. And so that that's the question. Okay, now there are additional rulemakings coming up and of course, with all of the. The um the budget cuts acts and and things like that pulling uh people into early retirement. Makes the question whether or not those individuals are gonna be able to have a rulemaking capacity at this point. So. It's a interesting time to see what rulemaking is gonna happen regarding carbon dioxide and pipelines, because as you said. It tends to filter down rather than up. So natural gas will go straight out.
What other question with that that I had before we got caught up? Um how many, if any, uh fire departments EMS services in Buchanan County are prepared? For a situation where there would be leakage of CO two or even in this area? I was, I would figure probably that. Okay, so they're cutting out, I mean, if if it comes in, who's gonna pay for? You know, preparing these, I mean, I mean, I just I just look at Scott over here, and that's even police force. If there's if there's something like that. They drive these situations, whether it's the the gas leak or those type of things, they try to protect it. Well, will they have any gear to counteract the CO two that's coming out and could, you know, knock them out and kill them? It this is this is a deadly situation or can be.
One of my biggest concerns is that every vehicle, well, ninety nine percent of the vehicles in the county are internal combustion vehicles. So if it was driving to one of these low line areas with saturated carbon dioxide, it's. Not to get to that more explosive moment, it's gonna be saturated.
If we're gonna capture it, why don't we just put an algae plant right beside or ethanol plant? You can grow algae, you can turn, you can ash take algae and turn it into oil. I mean.
I'm a big fan of trees.
Hey, that's that's my concern to this concern. So hey, do we do we have any idea where we're going as a state? We really don't.
No, I doubt it. Some some of it is given assurances that they would be responsible for training first responders and everything else. And I don't know where to go with them. It was gonna be a death loss and means what, two years ago or three years ago, they had a. It went out, was with Navigator back then, uh out in Heartland Acres, they did a whole. Evening, no train.
Three and a half hours of.
So I'm sure that's what their plan is, but. Yeah.
The problem is anything.
And there's really nothing we can do, you know, I mean, if if the state. Changes, then they change it. I mean, there's, our hands are tied. There's not a lot we can do as far as that goes. And we're not making those decisions.
There's some case law out there about um this exact topic, so. It'd be interesting to see what the board's up about.
Any other topics, uh public comment? I Wendy had one and then we'll go to Bobby.
I just want to thank the guys working for EMS. So that I know these are, it takes a lot of time. I know it takes a lot of time to put these budgets together, these plans together, the business planning together. And um it's uh Buchanan County citizens doing for Buchanan County citizens. I think that's where you get the best. Thank you, Buck. It's it's.
Yeah.
A true, a true uh work of the heart. So.
Thanks.
Um Saturday, we had um a little incident at on our road on Dugan. Where somebody came through, Walmart, Whole Foods, or anything like that, and just completely wiped out. Um there were two, there were two mailboxes on a post and wiped that out. And I wish I could have gotten the name of the officer that came out, because we pulled him, whatever he was doing, we pulled him out to, you know. Talked us about our stupid mailboxes. He was super nice, just super nice. I wish I got. Super nice, couldn't have been nicer.
It all starts with leadership.
Yeah, it was in the middle, it was in.
Twelve thirty P M.
Yeah, but and and my concern is not, you know, it's it. We'll put the mailboxes up, the mailboxes get taken out. That is not my concern. I couldn't care less if we try to do that. I couldn't care less. My concern is that. The speed that that people go on that road, and this was them. Had to be going a lot because we've got like a a four to five, six foot ditch and then.
Twelve, twelve, four feet, twelve, twelve feet wide.
And the mail, one of the mailboxes was thrown twenty feet into the field. Boss, you gotta hit that thing pretty hard. It take off the 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 whole big post that it was on. There was a little metal post underneath. And this four foot ditch, thank God he did not roll. Who whoever was driving did not roll the vehicle because it must have been tilted like this. And went quite a ways um that way. So I'm sure that will come up. Um but. Yeah, and so but my concern, what what is the speed limit on these moving gravel roads?
Um during eight like hours, they're fifty five and um by the time they're fifty.
And that's big long that that so it stays like that? Wow, that it gets really dangerous.
Obviously, your gravel road that's changed where um there's a sign need or post need of, you know, coming into a town or. Um something like that, that can change, but any any of the gravel roads that are, because you don't see any speed signs and stuff like that. Um on any of those.
Right, yeah.
It's just common law, common knowledge that.
They go beyond that's kind of, that's what they do on there. We're gonna have a some team drivers on there pretty quick. And uh I've been told there were already two fatalities on that little stretch there on Dugan. And it's that it can get scary if you're, they're working.
Especially when the dryer gets, you know.
Yeah, it does.
Like semis at fifty five mile an hour are not doing anything illegal. Um but they look like they're one seventy miles an hour, just all the busted stuff they kick up and.
It's a problem.
You're kind of there.
I thought I read further on though that the county can set a lower speed limit.
You can, but you'll find a lot of resistance to that because they don't obey them.
Um that be posted.
They have an ordinance for it.
Yeah. Reach one of those signs and.
Our studies have shown that uh changing the speed limit doesn't change anything, but. Have people break the speed limit.
You're not a teenage driver, Adam.
It's like throwing up an additional stop sign. A lot of times out in rural areas, they blow right through them. You don't care. Which is really sad and that happened. So you said you had something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board for uh getting the map of the county. I've actually had some people come in that, and they were standing out in the hallway to go in, and they found it very interesting to see all the different county courthouses and stuff. So thank you guys for putting that up.
Yeah, thank you for donating.
Appreciate it.
You have your public comment.
Um was it just the one mailbox or were there multiple?
Well, one post, two mailboxes, one on the post, and being destroyed both of the mailboxes big time.
Thank you.
Anything else? Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Good move.
Second.
Babe?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.